We are currently recording.
Let's see.
Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair, can we request an excused absence for Commissioner Bosbim?
Okay, we're going to request an excused absence for Will Bosbim. And.
Okay, I'll second it.
Vote.
Do you want individually, I forget. Commissioner Kidd?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Osby?
Yes.
Dressler?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, Wright, sorry, excuse me.
Michael Wright is here.
Yes, and are you in affirmative vote for excused absent for Commissioner Bosbim?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that it spans.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kidd?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Osby?
Yes.
Dressler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any conflicts of interest today? None stated, do we have any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam Vice Chair.
As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that all cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you, and I will remove the word "all," apparently probably we all have just one. Persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Of course, make yourself known on the phone if you're not present. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by MuniCode's code section 2-18. Amendments to California Government Code, section 54950, as he will prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. And would staff like to proceed with the issue number one presentation, or do you want me to read it first?
You can go ahead and read it.
The first item on the agenda is an application from property owner Gene O'Call, 2008 Rio Vista, Needles, California, also known as APN 0185 254 070000, for a special use permit of a 12.8 kilowatt roof-mounted photovoltaic solar project comprised of 32 panels. Mr. Martinez.
All right. Honorable Vice Chair and Planning Commissioners, if any, we have resolution 0316 2022 PC 2008 Rio Vista. It's a resolution to approve a 12.8 kilowatt solar array located at the previously stated address located up in the vistas off of the area of Coronado, Llulli Hill, between Aaron and Llulli Hill. Here's the house itself, the on Rio Vista, you can see it in the red. Here's just an aerial close-up, you can see that there is a carport and a structure. So the applicant is applying for a 12.8 kilowatt solar array. It's proposed that the single-family residential dwelling unit also has a carport, but the array won't be on the top of the dwelling unit. So it involves a rooftop installation, 32 solar panels at angled planes, so it's located within the R2 zone, which allows this type of use. Again, we have to go through this because it requires us anything over 10 kW to fit a special use permit from the planning commission. So that's why it's in front of you here today. And then here's the site plan, it meets the proper setbacks, the 32 panels are on top of the roof. And it's gone through the planning process and we recommend school of it. Here's what the equipment's going to look like. You can see it's maybe on top of the roof, somebody waiting in the room, so let me let them in very quickly. Okay, they disappeared, all right. So here's what the equipment's going to look like. And then here's what the site looks like today, as I had mentioned, there's a carport kind of structure, and then there's the house. They're only going to be going on top of the house. So the findings that we made for all special use permits, staff concur is that it does meet the requirements. So going to the third finding, the development is in general 40 with the general plan because it's residential medium density, which consists with the goals and objectives of the general plan. So it's allowed to be in this area based on the general plan, so finding number three is good. The development is in harmony with the area which it's located, so the solar array will have paneling to be flush with the roofing, so we're not going to see any kind of obstruction of use from the neighboring residences or from the public right away. So we do believe it's in harmony with the surrounding area. Number five, the development will not materially endanger the public health or safety. So the properties abutting in the subject site are residential based on the municipal code. The building provides the required setbacks, and we are sitting in the waiting room.
Grab him quick. Maybe it's the applicant.
All right, it is someone in the waiting room. We've been let in, we'll go back to the presentation. All right, so we're not in danger of the public health, so basically it meets the overall setbacks, overall height, so the requirement has been engineered, so these will be engineered. Building permits will be required, so it meets all the health and safety requirements of the building code, therefore the proposed project will not endanger life or property in the surrounding area. Finally, the sixth finding, the development will not substantially injure the value of the existing properties, the conditions of approval have been included to ensure that the panels will be kept clean, clear of debris and dust. The project will not degrade or impair the aesthetic quality of the neighborhood. So the conditions of approval, which we do for all solar projects, project is required to have building permits, comply with federal, state, local laws, planning, building share, health departments, the site shall be maintained in a clear and safe state. So our recommendation is to approve resolution number 3-16-10-2 PC approving a special use permit for the rooftop installation, 12.8 kilowatt solar array located at 2008 Rio Vista, NEOCA, in the R2 zone, also known as APN 0185 254 070000. That concludes my presentation, I believe that the applicant is also on the line if you have any questions. The applicant's representative is on the line, if you have any questions.
And what is his name?
Sir, would you state your name for the record? Michael?
Is he on mute?
Michael, are you on the line?
Michael Wright.
Okay, Mr. Beck, so apparently he's not on the line, he was supposed to be on the line, but still, again, this is a solar project, very clear cut. The requirements are the same that we do for all of them, and again, this has to come in front of you because it's the 10 kW or more, in this case it's 12.8, which is pretty typical for a house that size.
Thank you, and do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I do.
Bob?
I have objections to finding four and six because the staff is going beyond what the California state guidelines for solar will allow us to concern ourselves with. They will not allow us to deal with anything that has to do with aesthetics or views. We cannot concern ourselves with that, and staff is putting that in here, and I object to for us to be looking at solar panel systems that go beyond what California is, has requirements for. So their only concern that they allow us to be deal with is health and safety. And, you know, you put in there will not obstruct the use of neighboring residents, that's a moot point, we should not be concerned about that, staff should not be concerned about that. And then on the other, it says that the project will not degrade, obstruct or impair the aesthetic quality of the surrounding neighborhood. We cannot concern ourselves with that, because even if it did, we can't do anything about it.
So based on our municipal code, we could not approve this project because of not making the finding. So if you recommend a different finding, if we don't have these findings down, then we can't approve it. Based on our, you're right, the state law from 10 and below, we just got to pass it through, but from KW and up. So maybe those aren't things that we're allowed to look at, but in order for our municipal code to issue a special use permit, we have to make this finding. And so, do you have another recommendation to finding number four that you would like to see instead of this, if you don't agree with this finding?
Let me ask you, if somebody, if everybody in the gallery said that it's going to obstruct their, impair their view, are we allowed to then not find for that finding?
The way it would be written, that's correct, because it's stating that they are being obstructed, and so therefore that finding would be negated.
But that conflicts with California state law.
I understand what you're saying, I get what you're saying.
Mr. Daniels?
Obviously, the code needs to be updated as it deals with solar use. You are correct about what you're saying, and Patrick's trying to make the existing system work for this particular case. So I would ask that you make a notation that these requirements are, those particular requirements you point out are irrelevant. And then we will come back to you at our earliest opportunity with a specific amendment that addresses solar.
Especially.
Because we're trying to make a relatively new thing, legislation, yeah, it's two years old, you have a 1985 general plan.
It's been in effect since before 2008.
Wow, okay, but.
I mean, it's been, it's been a long time, and the thing that I'm concerned about is, is somebody else comes through and they say, oh, well, you know, this one, this one had to pass this, so you can't do it, you know, I don't want to set a precedent that says we're doing it this way.
Then, your motion, or somebody's motion ought to say this doesn't create precedent, and provide direction to update that section ASAP, to make it consistent statement. I have one, we're kind of.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Well, I think we, going back to, you know, part of our general plan and the way that we're doing, looking at cleaning up Needles and making all of these, we are making, like the metal buildings and different things, we're trying to improve the looks of the neighborhood. So if this could fall into our municipal code, I think that is beneficial for Needles in that the neighbors aren't upset with, you know, the construction or having it not look good and things in their neighborhood, because solar panels can be really obtrusive and not very pleasant. And, you know, the houses up there too are close together, and I think if it isn't in the code now, I think we should look at that as being a part of it to make sure that it doesn't obstruct views or that it fits in the harmony of the development area.
Madam Chair, Mr. Daniels would like to address that comment.
Okay.
The, Commissioner Rath is right, the state has overridden our ability to object because it obstructs views. The state has put additional restrictions on our ability on solar panels to make that fine, so.
So where does the, I'm letting myself interrupt, so where does the person that objects for obstruction on the grounds of obstruction of view go to to issue their complaint?
State legislature.
Okay.
Because there is, they have taken it, they preempted, they, the legislature has basically made a universal finding, and I'm sure there's a legal term for this.
Probably 20.
That solar panels cannot be denied because of.
Obstruction of view.
Obstruction of view.
So is.
Or aesthetics.
So if they're putting up solar panels in the front yard, we're okay with that?
I'm not saying we're okay, I'm saying that the legislature has taken it away from us.
Well, that wouldn't be obstruction of view allegedly, an objection under that, but in any event, do we need to have finding four to approve this?
You have to mean all the findings.
So all the findings are to comply with our MuniCode, which is no longer the law?
Yeah, that's, that's option one, and probably the cleanest, easiest way.
What?
Another, as exactly as you outlined that, or as Patrick outlined, I'm sorry. Another way to get there would be to say that those sections of the code do not apply in this situation.
That doesn't sound.
Why are they included if it's a state mandate?
Because our code is out of date.
So what about your first suggestion, that we amend, and it's, Ms. Kidd indicated MuniCode, you indicated general plan. Are you, where we, what do we have to amend, MuniCode, isn't it?
It's municipal code, county code is.
Okay, so we, that we had asked you to propose an amendment to our municipal code in order to fix this problem. Make it consistent with the state legislation. With what?
With the permitting of solar panels.
Okay, so you can give me the wording when we get there, but I have, Commissioner Kevin wants to speak.
I just have one question, because part of this has to do, this is in front of us because of the sizing. Does the state, as far as their opening this, do they mention size at all? Okay, that was my question.
But it impliedly only apply to.
Our code, but it would be, that needs to be.
But if the state doesn't, if this, I'm recognizing myself. If the state does not indicate a size, then can we not draw the conclusion that it only applies to 10 and under, where the public is loose out there?
It's written in our.
Can I address it?
Okay.
The state wants to encourage anyone, everyone, to put solar on.
Right.
And they don't want the cities to impose restrictions that would prohibit it. So they took our ability to restrict it based on views, they just allow us to do health and safety. And the best way that I can explain is, it's explained to me, if you've got a solar panel system that's heading towards a sidewalk, and it's in a snow area, they can make you put something up there to protect the pedestrians from the snow, that's health and safety. But whether how it looks, if somebody can see it, you can't do it, you know, you can't do anything about that. I mean, these solar panel systems, they hug the roof, so it's.
So we have a health and safety issue here with the high winds that we get, on average gusting 60 miles an hour. If these things aren't installed close and flush with the roof, and there is a warning on the plans, okay, that they're down as low as they can be, do we not have a health and safety issue with winds blowing, if they're, if they're taking that far off the roof? I had that happen when I bought my house now, I had the owner of the property over on Victory, which is two acres away, his carport roof flew over on top of my roof, a block away, and almost decapitated Jeremy, the roofing guy, while he was up there, okay? So if a carport roof can be blown off, certainly a solar panel framing can. So do, can we make this, we can't make it a health and safety issue, can we?
That is a health and safety issue, and if they were proposing one that created a wing-like effect, but in this case, they're not.
Okay, so, and, right, and this is specifically noted to be as flush as it can be, and warning.
And there's also a limit as to how much cost we can saddle the applicant with based on a resolution for health and safety concern.
Okay, so my, my suggestion would be that we carry out the rest of the pit list here on procedure, and then call for a motion, and see if we can properly phrase a motion to do what we need to do here. And that'll be up to whoever's voting tonight. Okay, does that work?
I've got a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
What's the difference in this and the 10 kW, is it just extra panels?
Right.
So in 10, they could do the panels and be the same difference.
And so they could just do administratively.
Yeah, somewhere, somewhere in the history of the city, the city decided that there was a difference in above 10 and below 10. Or legitimate reasons, I'm sure.
But they could have done the same thing and said 12.
Actually, yeah.
This particular number somehow.
But now, the state has preempted even that differentiation. Unless they, well, I was going to say double stack, but that won't work.
Shade brown.
So, but yes, what we're trying to do is get this proved. Make it appear that it complies with the zoning code. We've got to fix this.
Well, and we've had enough discussion tonight, we're being recorded, right? So we've had sufficient discussion for anybody that comes back and looks at this as to what dilemma we're faced with this evening. So the intent is valid, as far as I'm concerned, and the instruction to the city to figure out an amendment and not really dilly-dally around with it too long.
Madam Chair, this is the first.
Bob Rath is here.
No, sir, and I brought up this problem every single time that it's the solar panel.
First time in eight years that I've done.
Okay, every time it comes up and they mention this, I bring up the same, same thing.
Well.
I've never missed ones.
Well, in the eight years I've been here, this is the first one, it's come forward, and, oh, is it the solution? We got to, we got to fix that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else, before we move on to public comment?
No, go ahead, thanks.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, that was quick. And do we have any more discussion or deliberation before we approve the findings and go ahead and make a motion? No further discussion? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept this resolution, noting that finding four and finding six, as written, are relevant due to California state law.
I missed six, our discussion thundered around four.
Four and six.
What was six, can we put that up on the?
Finding four, roofing of the home will not obstruct views from neighboring residents from the public right away.
Ah, gotcha, it's the last sentence, okay.
And then six, the project will not degrade, obstruct or impair the aesthetic quality of the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And that the, we, my motion have to, anything to do with what staff should be doing?
Yes.
And, okay, and that staff research California law and make sure that the findings for solar panel systems are in conformance with California state law.
And I would caveat that, that the city is directed to draft a proposed amendment to the municipal code that would clean up this code section, if it means taking it out or whatever consequence that means, and then if we do have to address anything over 10, which I don't think we will, we just need to delete the existing by the sound of it, that that be brought to what, city council? Where, how do we amend, bring back for here first?
Madam Chair, ordinance amendments to the zoning code require planning commission review and council.
So, bring it back to planning commission, I would also request that it be done as soon as possible. So can we just do a caveat, that city is also directed to draft a proposed amendment to the code, which is basically a deletion, and bring it back to planning commission as soon as possible?
Yeah, hopefully for the next meeting even if you can, you know.
Yeah, you need some white out, I've got some.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
All in favor, vote.
Council, Commissioner Kidd?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Rath?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Osby?
Yes.
Dressler?
Yes.
Okay, and whatever applicant was on the phone, thank you for phoning in, and congratulations. Is he gone? Okay, or he's on mute. Okay, and the number two is application from Mr. Curtis Devine for a conditional use permit of a cannabis retail business located at 1409 Needles Highway, Needles, California, and 113 Needles Highway, in the C2 general commercial zone, also known as APN 0185 066 190000, and 0185 066 230000, which has been pulled by the applicant. Is there any need to have the clerk confirm that, okay?
What building locations were those?
They're across from the Healing Center, where the snow cone place is, basically. On, Miss Drong.
Completely, yes.
Are there any board requests? Mr. Rath? Can we take Mr. Wright first, so I don't forget him, because he's invisible? I can't see him.
Commissioner Wright?
I don't, I don't have any, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner Rath?
None for me, thank you.
I have none, Commissioner Osby?
I just have one question, because I pass it every day, out on Needles Highway, it would be on the east side, there are some, looked like settling ponds, there was a lot of earth movement done a long time ago, and there's some, yeah, there's a bunch of metal there, and there's even a trailer, but there hasn't really been anything, I just wonder if that project is still going forward?
Oh, going north toward Laughlin?
Yeah, but it's, you know.
I saw it a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and I just wondered.
Ross from Ringbo.
Yeah, I wondered what the status was on that.
The applicant, fluid holdings, received a conditional use permit from the city for cannabis cultivation. And in order to get that, he needs city water. So that was an unanticipated expense on his part. So we're waiting for him to come forward with a plan to extend the city water, which is at Paradise Park. Now, here's where it gets tricky. He can get by with a service line, that's all, which will meet all of his needs. We want a 16-inch line, because otherwise, he'd put in the 8-inch line, and we would have to come back and put in a 16-inch line on top of it. So he is voluntarily held up until he can get that resolved.
Ken, just, just out of curiosity, not that it's a practical solution, could he hypothetically use a water tank? Big, you know, those big white tanks there, or a reservoir?
He could, but he would have to feed it by a truck. And he, but it would be for, the biggest use of water in those buildings are the domestic, the restaurants.
Oh, so it's not much? Well, relatively.
Well, that's why, you know, a 2-inch, I think a 2-inch, maybe a 3-inch service line is all they really need.
That's a big line for one property.
Yeah, yeah, so it's probably too much.
So I would think a water, I know that lady, because I was looking to buy that house many years ago, out by Calnev, or the trailer park where the, on the right, there's a house, and she operates with a water tank out there, it's really easy to see that, and that's one person, that, well, back when I was looking to buy it, that, that is one person operating, and she didn't go through that much water out there, and she's there. You're looking at me funny, she sold it, and now everybody doesn't want to buy it anymore. Wait, you bought it? Anyway, so I was thinking for the little amount of water, because that place is not that large, and it is a, it's a hydro cannabis, right? It's the first one we would have that's hydro, Mr. Daniels?
I think it's just pods, they're just pods.
No, no, it's not hydroponics, where it's grown in water, it is, it's going to be standard.
Layered or something different, something different than what all of our other operations are.
Yeah, they're growing in pots.
And what he was, what he was going to do was use containers.
Okay.
But put them in a building, follow me?
Okay.
Standard typical containers.
Right.
Except.
But that project's on hold right now until, and that'll come to us when he's ready, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For the water line, but he, they already got approved for the cannabis CUP.
Yeah, when he's ready to do the water and get it moving.
It's a water service line issue.
Right, does that even come to us when it's water? No, so we'll never see it again. So we're anxiously awaiting. When I saw those things laying out there in the trailer, I thought, oh, they're making progress.
Well, they've been there a while. They were there a lot, long, a lot longer than the trailer. Trailer's been a little bit. I just wonder.
Okay.
Hoping they were moving forward.
So is there a city manager report tonight?
I have two things.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're.
Commissioner Dressler?
I don't have nothing.
It's good. And Jerry Kidd? On board requests?
Oh, I asked if anybody had one. We, I wasn't going in order. I guess I was, because, because Mr. Rath, I wanted to not forget Mr. Wright on the phone, so I asked if Bob could wait. Fine, I don't have any. Kevin did. Now we're going in order. Does Scott have any board requests?
No.
Commissioner Kidd, do you have any board requests?
No.
Okay, so, um, then that concludes the board requests. We have a city manager report now.
Yes, I have two items, Madam Chair. One is, um, it is water related, but it is in future of Northeast related to. Um, as you know, we had four wells the city was operating. In twenty nineteen, the, uh, water agency, the state water agency disqualified three of those four wells because of elevated levels of manganese. Banganese is not a health threat. You can go get manganese vitamin supplements at Rite or at any health food store. It is not a cancer-causing or, uh, like, it's naturally occurring mineral in the Colorado. The state of California, in all their wisdom, adopted standards for manganese, which disqualified our use of three of our four wells. We have two wells that are in the twenty one to twenty five hundred gallon per minute range, and then two that are much less. So it left us, when you take out these three, it left us with one twenty one hundred gallon per minute well. And as you recall, we got a lightning strike, shorted out the pump. And we were within, on a summer day, within about two hours of being out of water. Because our, we weren't able to keep our storage tanks full. So fortunately, we found the part and did a shuttle race between here and Phoenix to get that part up here. We got that part installed in, uh, in the nick of time. That's not a reliable water system. So we began a search for a new water line, domestic water line of, in the twenty five hundred gallon per minute, so we would have a backup to our other twenty one hundred gallon. And, uh, we looked at dozens of sites, all company, researched, had a hydrogeologist research all of the existing well logs and even capturing those. And they concluded that the best source of water was going to be at the Merle Shaver substation in Northeast, just after you go across the freeway interchange. Um, we received approval from the state water resources board that they would pay for that new water line. We put it out to bid, company by name Elaine Christensen, who has dug all the wells that we had, uh, was the successful vendor. They drilled a bore hole, which is about a three inch diameter test well to go down to find out how much wa, volume is there and what is the water quality. We pulled the samples, sent them to two different labs. Both of them came back, it exceeded, the water quality exceeded manganese and iron levels. So we were faced with what we thought were three choices. One is go find a new well site. We believe that the hydrogeologists did the survey and identified the universe of realistic well sites. Remember, we're still in the state of emergency because we don't have a well. The alternative was to build a water treatment facility at that well. Site number sixteen. Now, our last costing of a treatment facility was in the range of a couple to five million. Alternative three, which we are pursuing, is to cap well sixteen. The bore hole. And to go down to where the old water treatment plant is today along hole number six of the golf course. And to build a new water treatment plant facility there. And from there, we can have these, three of these four wells, which have been disqualified. We believe that we can treat the water and bring those back into production.
Treat it for manganese?
Yeah.
Would it?
Manganese and iron, and Jerry Porter once told me, he said, Rick, I can make the purest water.
Always gonna have iron.
Anywhere, if we can make the treatment plant work.
Um, would it still, that's the part that's on the golf course on the road, right? Where all the ducks and everything are, okay? So what a new treatment plant, if it's gonna handle that many wells, um, be the same size, so we're not interfering with the size of the golf course?
No, it's not gonna affect the golf course. Plus, there's land behind that we can go out into.
But that's all golf course, right, right next to it?
Oh, so it, it's not adjacent to the road, so as you're, as you're driving and you go past the maintenance yard, and then there's the one green right here, and then there's a fairway that comes this way. It is.
Where's the road? Where's the, where's the road to the golf, where's the road to the, um, restaurant? On your little invisible bike?
To this. It's on the other side of the road. It's on the Elgarce, the railroad side of the golf course.
Oh.
So.
Okay, I'm thinking of that big pond thing that's, okay.
So two decades ago or more.
Okay.
The city of Laughlin was putting in a treatment plant. The city bought, the MPW, or city, I don't know who's there, bought the treatment plant, reassembled it here, and never was able to make it work.
We need a better mechanic.
Well.
It's a lot cheaper.
So it has sat there unused for a couple of decades. This would salvage what we could out of that, for example, the tanks, the big, the big tanks. Uh, and then supplement it with modern, uh, treatment filtration screening, uh, other chemical treatments which sequester, um, the unlighted compound. And then it would feed what we call the manifold, and it's a big switching piece that for well eight, it's turned this direction, and well eight feeds. But it's well fifteen, it's turned and the pipe aligns with well fifteen as it feeds.
Yeah, we have a lot better technology now, all, all the way around, but that, that's an old aqueduct system.
So.
Rotating.
Uh, the water, our water department staff is working with the, um, state water resources department. And, uh, we're in the ninety percent plus, uh, level of certainty that state's gonna pick up there.
So they reneged when we found this out?
Well, we, we are obligated to report problems and turn in the, the test results, so they agreed with our decision to stop any more work on well sixteen. Cap it. We've dismissed the well driller. And now we won't have to build a new well. We'll build a water treatment plant to replace the one that's there. But we believe, and state is in general concurrence, that that may qualify these other three wells to come back into production.
How much does it cost? I mean, you say one to two million to build one. How much does it cost to operate it if that's all successful? What kind of costs?
Well, they, uh, they, uh, we've agreed on a consultant that is gonna be here Monday to prepare a report on those costs. Uh, and then, uh, we'll share it with the state and, and share it with council and my needs.
If you're treating water, are you not, not also using now many more chemicals? Right now, we're just using basically bleach or something, aren't we?
Right now, we're, we're treating with fluor. We treat all of the water with fluor.
Fluorine.
But, and with that, will be required to continue. But the, the treatment to get rid of iron and manganese involves filtration. And it, and I'm just outside my comfort zone on my technology expertise. No.
But do, do you know if they actually add chemicals to our water? You don't know?
I don't know yet. But we only have a state-of-the-art water treatment, so is the way things are going now. I just wanted to bring you up to speed.
Well, Big Bear did that, you know?
What's that?
Big Bear Lake did that. Actually, Big Bear did that. I think, the, the water treatment plant is outside the city limits of Big Bear Lake. It's in Big Bear City. But, um, it's out off Lake Irwin, I think. Okay, you know where that big thing is, okay? So they went through all of that. I moved up there in ninety-two, and it was, I think it was built before I got up there. So it's been there, and it's been successfully operating. Is that basically what we're talking about, a treatment plant like that?
Right.
That's some acreage, too.
Were you saying that all the wells, pipe-wise, feed to the location or?
Yes, because when they were all functioning, we could change which well fed the reservoirs. Because we had problems with one of it, one of them, aid, I think, caving in. So it was unavailable, so we could just go change the alignment, and then it could.
So all the water's gonna come there, be treated, and then go reservoir.
So it'll go, now, they will all go to the treatment plant, and then from the treatment plant over to the management.
Does that eventually go to the tanks of?
Yes.
The rodeo?
Yeah, both, and then, uh, with that, we are in a site search now for a new reservoir site. Because having a day and a half of water storage in the winter and a day of water storage in the summer is not enough.
So how?
So, so we will add a million and a half gallons or about double the size.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the time right now.
Yeah.
Time element.
Uh, well, we've, we've got to identify the property. We've, we've got some candidate sites picked out.
Didn't you have one up on, in, uh?
They're all gonna be up in Gates is where, uh, we want to put it because the Gates area has a lower water volume and pressure than the other parts of town.
Oh, you got gravity on your side, too.
Yeah, so we'll go up in the hills.
One more question. So are the reservoirs gonna contain pretreated or treated water?
Treated water.
Okay.
I mean, if, I mean, right now, it'll, yeah. Within twenty-four hours after the treatment plant's turned on, it will all be treated.
Well, well, in other words, in the flow, the flow of the water, it's gonna go through the treatment plant, then to the reservoir.
Yes.
Then the pipes, as opposed to coming from the reservoir, going through treatment to the pipes?
Yeah, you're, you're correct, the first one, and that is it will go through the treatment plant, and then we pressurize up the hill, and up until the line blew out on the D Street Bridge, we only had one pressurized water line. Now we have two. Because the state funded a second line that's in Broadway, supply the, the shopping center. So we're still in the search on the, the water tank. We purchased the water reservoir about five years ago. A Bakersfield was decommissioning one. We have it on carts, on pallets down at, uh, the yard. And so it will be assembly of that.
That all metal?
Yeah, yeah, it's steel-like, like, uh, like the others, and it's, it's vandalized.
I was saying about the sun. The heat.
Uh, but it, it's a six to nine month process to get that.
Yeah, we're still in all dire straits in the meantime.
Um, I believe there's an environmental review that's required of that. We'll, we'll have to come here for your ultimate, uh, review.
Well, time is of the essence on that one.
Yeah, yes. Uh, and then we are replacing the manifold down in the, in the golf maintenance parking lot. It's right in the middle of that dirt parking lot. Um, and then we also have, um, hundreds and hundreds of yards of water line replacements.
Somebody said yay on the phone.
Yeah, so there's, uh, there's some ten, ten to eleven million dollars of water system improvements that are in process. We've known this since two thousand and one. What needs to be done is just, we had the opportunity now to.
Well, there were a lot of years we didn't have the money for it.
And this is one hundred percent grant.
Ah.
But state. So that's item one, is just an update on well sixteen. Uh, I checked up.
Thank you.
The other is, uh, if you're, if you've been out on the west end of town, uh, the road paper is in town, and they're starting their work on, uh.
Oh.
Getting.
Right at Panda.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was here at lunch. Uh, and they, they are doing, uh, the preliminary work on replacing, and they will be doing slurry and grind and pave, uh, for the next four weeks or so. In the meantime, we are finalizing engineering for another three million dollars of streets that will be done uh, in hopefully late spring.
What's that general area of town?
Well, there's, uh, some of the streets, uh, right now, we're doing some of the streets down off of front. And, uh, on the other side of Broadway, slurry, and there's one or two grind and pave. And then the other, the next area that seemed to be, uh, it was the vistas and, uh, the Sabola, uh,
Oh.
Down.
Well, that's off-ramp.
Yeah, it's this side of Broadway. It's kind of that area. And, uh, and then we received word that we, uh, we received approval from a bill that Congressman Obernolte championed that got us another eight hundred thousand dollars of road repair money. So that engineering was authorized once we got word that's now available. The other is, uh, and this is kind of a general, uh, it's not really probably on topic, but we had, we continue to have acts of violence or vandalism in the community. Most recent was down at Jack Smith Park, where the big cabana is where there are a lot of kind of group picnics. There's a pedestal, electric pedestal. And that's where the wires come out of the ground, and they are housed in a structure that's about maybe four foot tall. And they're encased. Over the weekend, we came into possession of a video of four or five kids destroying that. And in the final acts of destruction, there are sparks flying everywhere. If the ground would have been wet, then it did.
I think, were they identified?
Uh, yeah, well, the.
You can't say it's under investigation.
Vandals today take millions.
Yeah, and post them.
One of them took a video and shared it, and we came in possession.
Good.
With that with school, that with the sheriffs to identify. And they've been identified. And one of, three of them or four of them are under eighteen. One of them, by a matter of a couple of weeks, is over eighteen. That is felony vandalism.
Which means they'll get a weekend of community service.
Well.
At least they'll.
Meeting with the parents and students on Monday.
You set an example.
What I've, uh, what I intend to ask for is eighty to hundred and twenty, I haven't fixed on a number yet, of community service. Or restitution for the forty one hundred dollars that it cost us to replace that. Plus, there's a fine in our vandalism warrants to go from fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars. And I'm looking at another remedy that hopefully will address, it, it's underage drinking.
Where are they getting it?
Because they were, they were drunk would be an understatement. So good kids.
You might also add a class in electrocution.
Well, maybe this will be a great learning experience, they, they didn't get hurt, but for them and their parents.
Well, and that's what, that's what I, I want this to be, is, uh.
Stupidity, I mean, sheer stupidity if they could have been electrocuted.
You know, what drives someone to destroy public property?
Hey, did you meet with the parents?
Not yet, Monday, Monday morning.
Did you just say that?
Yeah.
My brain clicked on.
But eight o'clock Monday morning, and we can, we can, uh, fully prosecute or reach this settlement, and I generally outline the settlement that I'm, uh,
Well, I was. It's a given something's better for that than prosecuting.
Sure, because I, we have to rely on others, like the DA.
Well, and they're, yeah, they're not doing anything, like, you're lucky to get a conviction for murder these days.
Well, it's, um, this, uh, the, the unintentionally putting themselves at risk.
Yeah.
And though the pedestal was late.
Well, so of course in electrocution.
Yeah.
Give them a pamphlet some from someplace they have to read and get tested on, let the school do it.
Right, so it's, uh, vandalism continues to be a problem. This is, uh.
Four of them or five of them?
Well, it's four or five, I think.
Okay.
Uh, but one of them, just by a matter of a couple of weeks.
What time of the day or night did this happen?
It was dark, that's all I can tell you.
Okay.
But it's, uh.
So where do the electronics go to? Yeah.
Property that's being damaged.
Uh, well, same thing with the parks, what they've done to the bath, the restrooms, break, breaking toilets and lighting bombs off in toilets or whatever. Um, what did the electronics go to? Is our park down now in some way?
They, they're, they come off the road and they're in condom. Then they come up and then they feed that cabana.
Oh, just the lighting?
Uh, lighting and any electrical appliances that people want to plug in.
Oh, so there are plugs?
Yeah, yeah. Hmm, so.
And right now, the weather is beautiful, so there's a lot of, a lot of people that probably want to go down there.
It's, um, we are, um, I met today, we met today with Caltrans. Uh, they are doing a five million dollar big monument sign at the east end of town, about five mile road, uh, which darn things, thirty feet high and seventy feet wide.
Why out there?
Uh, because it's part of the state's gateway program. So they're doing five of those along, uh, Parker, on this side of Parker, um, down on Highway A ten, forty, and fifteen as it comes into California. They're big, they're, they're dramatic signs. Actually, seven foot bear.
Oh, nice.
Bear. Um, they are also have, uh, shared with us plans to do uh, re-landscaping of the three interchanges in town, including public art. So what I, I don't know whether this is it, but what I have in mind is you know, some intersections you see, interchanges you see up in Las Vegas on the freeway. Maybe that's what, but I, I don't know enough yet. And the third is, we received a, a grant to build a new park uh, at First and Second Beach. And it will involve, um, handicap access down to the beach of, of concrete rain. It will involve a walking trail along the river. It will involve additional parking down at what is Manny Morris Park, which is almost a rehabilitated vista. Uh, and then we're going to put some grass out in front of the nineteenth hole, between the nineteenth hole and the river, and some picnic tables. And then add parking at the eastern end, plus children's play equipment, plus a restroom.
More parking, uh, in addition to those few spaces that are there?
Right.
Now, didn't we already have funding going into that whole project?
Um, no, we had plans.
We have plans, no money.
Uh, it got, we submitted and got funded two point two million.
Okay, cool, cool.
So, uh, we should have a world-class beach park.
Where is that last amount coming from?
Well, it cannot have a program called Clean California. And it's funny, all three of those projects I just mentioned are all being funded out of California.
Caltrans, yeah.
The monument sign, the landscaping, and this park.
How are the roads, generally speaking, that Caltrans is responsible for, do we have any of those?
Yes, um.
What kind of condition are they in?
Well, um, ninety-five south from the freeway to Bligh.
Would you rather I didn't ask any questions?
That, that's, that's a state highway.
Which way, ninety-five?
Ninety-five south.
South.
South of I forty. That's a, that's a state highway. But that's about the only state highway in town.
Well, that's in good shape. Thank you.
Caltrans also had a free dump day last weekend, they collected a hundred and sixty cubic yards of stuff, mattresses, tires, whatever people had in the garage. We have one coming up on the twenty-sixth, where we're going to put seven forty-yard roll-off boxes around town and, and make sure nothing goes in there that's not supposed to be, and uh, so another, another cleanup that we're doing.
They went well the last couple of times.
Yeah, very well.
Is there any updates on the grocery store?
Um, not really, I mean, it's, uh, we've talked, we continue to have conversation with them, it's all positive, it's always moving forward. Um, and what do you say? What's that, as early as October?
As early as September.
Is that before the gas prices went up?
To be sure. Yeah. So we maintain a relation, uh, you know, conversation. I thought you were going to say the underpass, but, uh, the underpass is under the NSF uh, decision-making, and it's just, it's the right-of-way permit to work in there right of way. They've approved the design.
What about the old road?
The what?
The old road that went right over the rail tracks to get to the other side.
Well, in two thousand and five, the city council, uh, allowed that to be closed.
But it was, I thought it was conditional.
Uh, it was conditional that the city identify a a right-of-way, and BNSF was obligated to build a road that connected over to K Street. The city never identified that right of way. So the BNSF was required to build. So therefore, out of Colorado Shores and that whole area, we have one way out. Now, we have the, the dirt road that comes in right there at the, at the underpass. But, uh, yeah, they, they approved closing, and the condition was that they push that, another street through and that. It was a comment upon the city doing some actions, which didn't get done.
I was on the council when that, I was on the council when that went through.
You know more about than I do.
So what happened, what, I never mind, Kevin can't stand me asking questions here, so.
Well, what I understand was the, the only place to come out didn't line up with consistent theory. I had to remove them, so.
Yeah, really.
But, you know, it's, uh, people, they did what they needed to do at the time and with resources allowed. So I, I, I don't want to be critical of our process.
But wasn't it the job of the railroad to complete it since they wanted us to give up their?
It was a five-year period of time that they had to, we had to identify the right-of-way, they had to.
But during that five years, it was, it, the railroad would have paid for it, is what I'm asking.
Right.
Right?
They were obligated to pay.
So because we didn't do anything, now we can't?
Yeah, right, the, the five-year period is expired.
But no one would have thought that they would have held this underpass up like designed.
No.
This is just ridiculous.
In December.
They've got another motive.
Twenty. Twenty twenty. Yeah, so it's been a year and a half, we selected the contract. Phillips excavation has the barrier that's going to go across there in their yard.
And all we have is some, a bunch of attorneys sitting on it.
Yeah. Well, we need, we need to get around.
I was number one in my class, can I say?
From BNSF, and.
Got to get a hold of the right person.
Oh, I know, I know.
I'll sneak in there and get a job, ask for assignments.
Patrick's in weekly conversations with the person they identify. They're, they're, so anyway.
Oh, Patrick's too nice.
Last thing I want to do is bring up to you that, uh, tomorrow is the open community planning, the general plan open house. The focus is on what is downtown? Uh, what, what are the economics of commercial development? How much land do we have available in commercial downtown at the freeway interchanges? And what uses are we going to try and attract? What kind of strategic investment to induce development into downtown? It's all those policy questions wrapped up in it.
So what about the project, sorry, the, the big project right by the needle signed by El Garcia's? The big block, what's happening with that project?
We're, we're in communication, I saw a letter that went to them within, or since Monday.
But they're still planning going forward with it, it's just they're not moving.
Best I understand, but if they fail to meet a deadline, the property comes back to the city.
Okay, and is that this year?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But it's, it's imminent.
Yeah, they had specific performance.
Now, when, when we initially sold it, they had to start substantial construction within a year. But they asked for an extension because of COVID. Council said, okay, but we're going to do three-month milestones. And if you fail to meet one of those specific milestones, then it's breached.
And they already have.
So they met the first one, and that is they submitted their formal claims.
Oh.
And then we commented back and I'll, I'll give you a, a more elaborate update. But we want to see that, we want to see that happen.
Hampton Inn's coming right along.
Hampton Inn is, uh, I think right now they're talking about, uh, August. They had a contractor that didn't want to work last summer in the heat, LA contractor. And they got a couple of months behind. And then the supply chain probably pushed them another month back, but they're stuck on the building. So it is progressing, albeit.
All right.
I want it all, I want it all now. But the Best Western is sold. Um, there's a new owner there. Uh, we are working with, um, the Flavor of India to relocate it into the Old Juices.
I thought that thing, I saw a notice in the paper, something about some lien sales or it's a change of ownership in the legal notices about, and to me, what it looked like, and I don't know. If you're selling a place, you put a notice out in the newspaper that you have X amount of days if you have a lien against this place or any of the contents of it to come and claim the money or the property. So that's what I read in the newspaper, so that indicated to me the sale went through and they're progressing.
They went through.
And they sent, so this, that, they're moving on.
And we have connected the owner of the Indian food restaurant with the owner of Bacon Juices.
Oh, so the people that bought it aren't starting a restaurant?
No, they're not restaurateurs, it's an investment.
Okay, got it.
And their interest was in the hotel, but it was packaged as one, one date. Can't think of anything else, but I could go on for that.
Okay. Do we have anything else from any of the commissioners? From any of the staff? Okay, may, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I just did.
When I call for it, out of order, second.
I'll second.
Beat you to it.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thanks, everybody, thanks for our.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.